Hi, good afternoon and welcome to today's HAI Work webinar. I'm Dan Sweet, Director of Public Relations and Communications here at HAI. On behalf of the rest of the HAI staff, we're grateful that you've taken the time to join us today. Today, we are joined by representatives from Denton's, one of the largest law firms in the world, who will discuss the CARE Act here in the U.S. Following their presentation, we will discuss, we'll make time, following their presentation, we will make time for questions. Trying to get my screen up, there we go. Before we get started, I'd like to run through the list of participants that are on the webinar today. That'll be James Viola, our President and CEO, followed by Kate Clark and Chris Martino, who'll probably be on our, by phone, just in case they have any, you guys have any questions for them. From Denton's, we have Chris Feitzer, Partner for Public Policy, Randy Knuckles, Partner for Public Policy, who is joining by phone, Gary Goldberg, Senior Policy Director for Public Policy, excuse me, Kelly Wykoff, who is a Partner for the Tax Department, and Michael Pfeiffer, Managing Associate for the Federal Regulatory and Compliance. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to James Viola, our President of HAI, for his opening remarks.
Thank you today for attending another CARES Act information, how it lay for everyone. The, these resources, the webinars that HAI is pleased to offer to the members. The CARES Act, commonly referred to as Phase Three right now, is the 2.2 trillion COVID relief package signed into law last month. The 880 pages that the bill was attached to for Congress was at a speed rarely seen in DC, especially these days. But we are pleased that the legislation was passed with a number of important provisions for our industry that HAI and some of the people on this webinar successfully advocated for. So some of that includes the Air Carrier Payroll Support Program eligibility for Part 135 operators, and suspension of the fuel tax and other federal transportation excise taxes that apply to commercial operations. We want to help explain these and other key components of this legislation to you, our HAI members. So today, you know, as Dan was talking about, you'll hear from the team from Denton's, the largest law firm with 183 locations in over 75 countries, which means that we want to try to get that international flavor. The Denton's Public Policy Team that's on today helps clients like us and you navigate these intersections of business, law, regulation, and policies around the globe. So Chris Feitzer, the Partner at Denton's, is going to start things off for you today, and hopefully we'll get to some of the questions that you all need to survive these times today. So thank you. Over to you, Chris.
Thanks very much, Jim. I appreciate that introduction. I just want to open by saying that Denton's is excited to begin working with HAI, with Jim, with Dan, with Kate, Chris, John, and the rest of the team. It's been about a week, and we're excited to be hitting the ground running here and opening things up with this webinar today. We have a great team in place that you'll be hearing from today. I don't need to reintroduce my colleagues, but I can tell you that Randy, Gary, and Kelly are tracking the CARES Act and its implementation about as closely as anyone within our firm in the United States. So they are certifiable experts on the legislation and its implementation. Without further ado, I do want to quickly transition over to Randy to lead things off. And with that, pardon me as I get our slide up and running here. I just want to finish by saying that we understand this is a very challenging time for your industry, for each of your organizations, for your families as well, and the Denton's team is here to help. So with that, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Randy.
Thank you, Chris, and I'm delighted to be with HAI today and Jim and your whole team. Gary and Kelly and I, as Chris said, have done quite a number of webinars for clients, and we're delighted to be joining the HAI team to be supportive of your programs and your policy initiatives, and so are delighted to be able to present this today. Chris, let's go to the slide number two on our slide deck. This is just an overview of what was mentioned earlier, which is the CARES Act was passed in late March, the 26th of March, on a Friday. $2 trillion package, they refer to as Phase Three Bill. In that bill, of course, are things that you're hearing about in the news every day now, including the $1,200 or $2,400 checks coming by electronic transfer or paper check to all taxpayers. Some of that is beginning to arrive this week. That's for anyone with income of $75,000 or less. Also, there was, in the CARES Act, a broad expansion of unemployment compensation. And as you've seen, the unemployment figures and the number of applicants for unemployment compensation around the country has been historically high applications at the state level. Chris, let's go to the program that we want to talk about in some detail here today, which is slide number three, the Paycheck Protection Program. This program, the Triple P Program, was approved in the CARES Act and funded at $349 billion. It's a loan program with a forgiveness component to the program for small businesses of less than 500 employees, C3 charitable organizations, self-employed, sole proprietors, and independent contractors. That program was initiated and opened for applications on April the 3rd, and it's already, we saw some numbers just yesterday, I guess, as of the 13th. They closed the business on April 13th, so two days ago. Over $250 billion of that money, of the $349 billion, has been committed to applicants. Over a million applicants have already submitted and been approved for that program from all 50 states. Average loan size so far has been about $239,000. We've got some breakouts that were posted on the SBA website last night that tallies the industries that are getting the money and the states where the money is being allocated. But let's talk about the details of that money. As you have already seen also in the news, the White House last week, via a letter from the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, has requested Congress to appropriate an additional $251 billion for the Triple P Program so that that program does not run out of funds. Congress is debating that or discussing that issue right now in the Senate and the House. I think there's broad support for adding additional money to the Triple P Program. There are a difference of opinion between the Republicans and the Democrats in Congress right now about what additional programs should be included in the next piece of legislation. But that is, that is, will be eventually added, money will be added to that program. So if we can, it is a program that is one where there is no collateral to be provided. It is a no, it is a program where you multiply your payroll for two and a half times your average annual payroll cost, and you come up with an average monthly payroll cost for your enterprise, whatever it may be. You can seek a loan then of two and a half times your average monthly payroll or $10 million, whichever is less. The, there's no collateral and no personal guarantee. Chris, let's go to the next slide, slide number four. All payroll costs that are calculated include wages, cash payments, and all benefits. Wages and cash payments or salary are only up to $100,000, so there is a limit there on how much you can add into your tabulation of payroll cost. It's capped out at $100,000 for salary and wages, but there is no cap on benefits. There was some question early on before the interim final rule came out and before the questions came out that were provided frequently answered questions or asked questions, answers to those about whether benefits were under the $100,000 cap. We now know that that is not the case. So if you have an employee with more than $100,000 income, then you would have to cap that employee's salary and wages. Payments to independent contractors where you might file a 1099 form would not be counted as part of your payroll tabulation. Finally, Chris, on slide number five, there is a forgiveness aspect to this loan program. At the, after you receive a loan, you would keep a tally of how you expended the loan proceeds. If you spent the loan proceeds in the eight weeks after receiving the loan on payroll costs, including benefit costs, on rent, on interest on a mortgage, or utilities, then at the end of that period, that portion of the loan that was spent on qualifying loan proceeds would be forgiven and wiped off the books basically by the SBA, paying that portion of the loan back to the lending institution that you went to. By the way, I may not have made it clear, you apply directly, as you've seen in the news accounts, you apply directly to your bank or any other lender that is participating in the program. Any portion of the loan that is not forgiven because it was spent on purposes that didn't qualify, or if you spent, for example, there is a restriction on spending more than 25% of the proceeds on rent, utilities, and interest on mortgage, then that would remain as a loan from the time of the loan obligation. If you received a loan in April, for example, it would be a two-year loan period at 1% interest that would accrue from the time you received the loan. There is no prepayment penalty for prepaying the loan early. Also, there is a deferral on any loan payment until January 1 of 2021. You do have to submit, of course, to the lending institution proper documentation for the loan, to accompany the loan application. And then you, at the end of June, after the period when the loan application period ends, at the end of June, you would have to submit to the lender documentation on how you utilize the loan proceeds to calculate what portion of the loan was, is eligible for forgiveness. There are a couple of restrictions within the program. One, for example, is you have to show that you haven't had a reduction in your workforce on a year-to-year comparison, meaning the period from February 15th to April 26th. If you reduced any employees during that period compared to the, a year earlier period, then you would lose some of the loan forgiveness in a multiplied fashion. You would set up an equation where you would have the number of employees as the numerator compared to a year earlier, two different time periods that you can use to compare. On the denominator, that would create a quotient, and that would be multiplied against your expenditures that were forgivable as qualifying expenditures. And you might lose some of the loan forgiveness if you had reduced your workforce, unless before the end of June, you add those employees back to the payroll. So there is the allowance that if you terminated or furloughed someone or laid someone off between February 15th and April 26th, you can add them back to the payroll by the end of June, and you do not, are not penalized for that period where they were laid off or furloughed. The other thing is that you can not reduce any employee's pay by more than 25%. If you do reduce an employee's pay by more than 25%, then that amount of reduction in their pay exceeding 25% would not be a forgivable portion of the loan. I will stop there, and we will, Gary will go to our, the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, and Gary may want to comment on any portion of the Triple P Program as well that I may have overlooked.
Gary, over to you. We're having trouble hearing from you, if you by chance have it on mute. Gary, I'm not sure if you can hear us, but unfortunately, we're not able to hear you right now.
I will pick back up, Chris. If Gary's audio becomes available, then he can join in. The SBA Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, EIDL Loan Program, is a separate program that was approved for expansion as a part of the CARES Act. It is also for small businesses, public nonprofits with less than 500 employees, sole proprietors, and independent contractors. Through the EIDL Program, you can receive up to $2 million loan for working capital, up to a 30-year term at 3.75% interest rate. Payments on an EIDL disaster loan, if you will, are deferred for up to one year. The loan is based on your credit scores. No tax returns are required to be submitted. It is up to a $200,000 amount, can be approved without a personal guarantee. No collateral is required on the first $25,000 of the loan. There's a general security interest provided beyond that. Real estate is required for larger loans. You, as a part of this loan program, there is an emergency grant program where you can obtain $10,000 from the SBA within three days, and that grant does not have to be repaid even if you don't get approved for an EIDL loan. Now, this program, you cannot use this program to pay for the same costs that you would pay for with a Triple P loan. You can apply for both, and you would just have to be sure that you segregated expenses to show that you use the proceeds of the two loans for different purposes. Of course, the Triple P Loan Program is restricted to payroll, rent, utilities, and interest on the mortgage. The EIDL Loan Program could be used for working capital, for other purposes, for supply chain interruption, for equipment, for other things that might be necessary to continue your operations. That is a loan program where you apply to the Small Business Administration. I will say that we have heard some information that has been released from the SBA that has said that despite the amount that is being applied for because of the great demand for this program and because only about $10 billion additional dollars were put into this program, that loans are being approved, but only in the range of $25,000, $35,000 per applicant. So even though the maximum is set in the statute is $2 million, it's what they are approving for individual borrowers has been much less, at least until such time as Congress puts additional monies into the EIDL Loan Program. I will stop there, Chris, and let you discuss the critical infrastructure, national security lending programs that are also part of the CARE Act.
Thanks very much, Randy. Before I make that transition, Gary, are you back with us? And if so, do you have any input that you would like to provide on PPP or the EIDL loans? Okay, moving on. As I understand it, many HAI members, and understandably so, are interested in the $17 billion for loan guarantees, for businesses critical to maintaining national security included in the CARES Act. What has become perhaps one of the worst-kept secrets in Washington, and that's a fairly low bar these days, is that this money was intended principally for Boeing. Now, you may also be tracking the very public debate between Boeing, the administration, and certain key lawmakers on Capitol Hill with respect to whether or not Boeing will actually take or accept any of this aid. The key sticking point is the requirement for provision of this aid that any organization, company receiving a loan under this particular program or loan guarantee under this particular program would have to provide an equity interest to the U.S. government. Boeing CEO has been adamant in stating that Boeing will absolutely do no such thing. Now, this is part of an open-air, open-source negotiation, if you will. I am of the belief today that Boeing will ultimately accept at least a portion of this $17 billion. The reason being that it has little alternative. Boeing CEO has referenced a $15 billion reserve that the company can tap into, but as many of you may be tracking and may have read, Boeing announced yesterday to the market that 150 737 MAX orders were canceled last month as a result of the pandemic. The fact is Boeing needs support, and Boeing is actively exploring all possible means by which it can receive support through the CARES Act and its implementation. So the fact of the matter is, we believe that a significant portion of this $17 billion will ultimately go to Boeing. Time will tell. We are not discouraging interested companies or organizations from seeking to receive a portion of this aid, especially in the chance that Boeing ultimately opts to pursue relief through other avenues afforded to it by the CARES Act. It's having back-channel discussions and negotiations with the administration as we speak to explore all possibilities to determine whether or not the U.S. government would actually require it to adhere to the terms laid out in the CARES Act for provision of this particular aid. Now, the aperture, you know, of opportunity may well open in terms of other businesses critical to maintaining national security having access to these funds. And what's key is that under the Act, Secretary Mnuchin has incredibly wide latitude and discretion with respect to how these monies are allocated. And that's especially important if Boeing ultimately decides to seek relief through other provisions of the bill. With that, I will turn it over to Kelly to talk about some of the key tax provisions in the CARES Act.
Okay, can you hear me now? Thanks, Chris. Hi, everybody. I'm just going to talk about some of the key tax changes that have been enacted to provide some relief to employers as well as for-profit entities, and by relief, you know, basically helping them with their cash flow. The first section that I'm going to talk about for the CARES Act is the assistance that was provided via payroll taxes. There are two provisions, the first one being the deferral provision. And what that is allowing employers to do is to delay the payment of the employer's share of social security taxes through the end of 2020. And that share is the 6.2% of compensation that employers pay for their employees. And what, the deferral period will be that 50% of any amount that is deferred will be due at the end of 2021, and the other 50% is going to be due at the end of 2022. So effectively, the Treasury is providing a loan to enable cash flow. So you'll be able to retain those monies. The key point here is that these are not going to be available for employer's share of social security taxes that are due on or after the date an employer receives any PPP loan forgiveness. So you can, if you have applied for and have received a PPP loan, you can continue to defer the payment of your employer's share of social security taxes through the date that you receive any loan forgiveness. So essentially, and we didn't know this, we didn't have any guidance on this until this last Friday. So this is a fairly new provision, but the Treasury has said that employers can utilize this deferral provision until the date their PPP loan is forgiven. And the taxes that have been deferred through that date, they still are not due until the end of 2021 and 2022. So there's no acceleration for any taxes that you may have deferred through the end of your loan forgiveness. It's simply going to be that you cannot continue to defer the employer's share of social security taxes. So that was actually some good news that at least tax practitioners were not expecting. The other provision for payroll taxes is the refundable credit. And basically what that's doing is it provides a refundable payroll tax credit up to about $5,000 per employee, and that is available for, if you're a for-profit business, it's available to you if your operations were fully or partially suspended due to a government COVID-19 order, or if you have had a significant decline in your gross receipts. Significant decline has been defined as being your gross receipts have declined more than 50% for a calendar quarter, and you compare that to the prior year calendar quarter. So you would look for the second quarter of 2020. You would look at the second quarter of 2019 to determine whether you've had a significant decline and would qualify for the refundable credit. The refundable credit is going to be available for wages that have been paid between, on or between March 13th and December 31st of this year. The key point here is that if you received a PPP loan, you would not be eligible to claim the refund. So they're not going to allow double-dipping, essentially. These provisions on the refundable credit, it's the refundable credit for, it's the employee retention tax credit, which I should have said at the beginning. But the provisions are fairly complicated, qualifying for what types of wages qualify are fairly complicated. So I provided a link, the IRS has issued some pretty good frequently asked questions and some explanations. So that's a good place to start, at least, to try to understand how the employer retention credit might work if you think you're eligible for it. The other changes that I want to highlight for the for-profit businesses that are on here, and these are all designed to basically help with cash flow. So there's going to be a lot of taxpayers that are going to be applying, be amending prior year returns and claiming a refund for those prior years. That's what these are designed to do, is to hopefully get some cash back in taxpayers' pockets. The first one is the modification of net operating losses. And basically what they're doing is, well, in prior years, we had suspended the ability to carry back net operating losses. They have changed that, and now you can carry back for five years net operating losses that were generated in 2018, 2019, and this year. So I think that'll be fairly helpful to certain taxpayers. They've also suspended the limitation. We had enacted in 2017 a limitation on the NOL carryforward that you could claim, and that was 80%. Now we're back to 100% of, so there's no limitation on NOL carryforwards in 18, for 18, 19, and 20. So again, if you had some NOLs or are expecting an NOL, it's a good time to talk to your tax preparer. On a similar note, they've also suspended excess loss provisions, and those are available for non-corporate taxpayers, including a sole proprietorship. You're generally limited on the excess business losses that you can claim, and they've suspended that as well for 18, 19, and 20. So another possible opportunity for people to go back, amend returns in 2018, 19, and claim some refunds. The final two are the increasing business interest expense deductions and the expensing of qualified improvement property. Again, those are both retroactive essentially, and will allow, if you would qualify to, well, we've imposed a limitation on the deductible amount of business interest expense. Did that in 2017, and they've amended it to suspend, or really to increase the deduction that you could claim for business interest expense. So if you were limited, it's a good time to go back and look at your 2019 return, or if you haven't filed that yet, you know, claim that increase. And the final one again is the qualified improvement property. There was a glitch in the 2017 legislation, and certain expenses weren't allowed to be deducted immediately, and you were required to expense them over 39 years. deducted immediately, and you were required to expens them over 39 years. So again, they fixed that glitch, which is also beneficial and may allow certain taxpayers to go back and amend, plus get the benefit in 2020. So, Chris, I will turn that back over to you or Randy, but we'll see if there's questions.
Thanks very much, Kelly. We appreciate it. Gary, I believe you're operational once again, and I'd like to first turn it back over to you before we continue to weigh in on either overview that Randy provided of PPP and the IDL.
Chris, thanks very much. I apologize for the technology glitch that bounced me off for a few minutes. It's an honor to be with everybody. The, a couple of observations. First, with respect to the PPP program, as Randy indicated, there's no dispute as to the need for the funds or as to, both parties are anxious to supply additional funds to the PPP program, and there's no dispute as to the amount. They're talking about $251 billion. The open question is whether or not additional items will be added to the bill in order to move the bill through the Senate. Congressional Democrats are insisting that there be additional money for the states and localities, that there also be additional monies for the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. Now, I know that, I assume that Randy covered the particulars of the idle program in my absence, but the thing that is important to recognize is that even though theoretically you have a $2 million loan limit for idle loans, because the program has proved so popular and because there's so little money in the program at this point, as a practical matter, the SBA has limited the availability of those loans to $35,000. And so the program is not nearly as valuable as it would be in other circumstances. One other point about the idle loans, if you happen to have an idle loan and you have applied for the PPP program, you can take that idle loan and you can refinance it as part of your PPP loan, which has the effect of making the loan forgiveness provisions available to you that wouldn't otherwise be available. Now, the other item that I want to cover with you briefly beyond PPP and the idle program is the Payroll Support Program. That Payroll Support Program is obviously a very important program to Part 135 carriers and to the carrier industry in general. There's $25 billion that was made available for air carriers under that program. There's been heavy negotiations between the Treasury and particularly the larger airlines with respect to the terms of those loans. And just the other day, Treasury Secretary Mnuchin announced that in connection with the Payroll Support Program, and it's a grant program, you don't have to pay it back. If you're talking about the less than $100 million, and I'm sure that would be the case for most of the people who are on the line here, then it's strictly a grant program. What he did do, however, in order to extend the program's reach, was to say that with respect to the 12 large aircraft carriers that have applied for the program, that only 70% of the program would be a cash grant, that the remaining 30% of the program would be a loan. That's created a lot of controversy, but it also has the effect of extending the reach of the program. Now, I know there's several questions, the most important of which is if you've applied for this money and the application started on April the 2nd and the 3rd, and some people had applied as soon as the CARES Act was passed, you want to know, when can I expect to get the money? On April 10th, when the Treasury supplied some additional guidance, Treasury Secretary Mnuchin simply said promptly. What that means, we don't know yet. Our belief is that the money has been delayed in part because until they settle on terms with the larger airlines, including some agreement with respect to warrants, in other words, stock agreements with those companies, that they won't really know how much they have to have available for the program. There is a pro-rata reduction provision that the Treasury is imposing with respect to those year grants. So if the program is oversubscribed, there's been some inconsistency between the initial March 30th announcement of the program and the most recent update on the program for Treasury on April the 10th. The original program information indicated that the reductions, if the program was oversubscribed, would be on a pro-rata basis. In other words, your share of whatever the overage is, you would have your share of your grant request reduced accordingly. There's some reason to believe, based upon the April 10th guidance from the Treasury Department, that that pro-rata reduction will be limited to the large air carriers, but we just don't know the answer yet with respect to that program. Final point, and then anxious to hear your questions, we know that this program is a separate program from a loan program that's also available to air carriers under the CARES Act, and it's also separate from the PPP program. So the fact that you may have an application pending with PPP does not bar you from seeking air support. Now, you have to apply by April the 27th. If you applied by April the 3rd, you'll receive earlier consideration, but as long as you apply by the 27th, the timing of your application will not affect the amount that's available to you, but Treasury reserves the right not to consider applications or to reduce the applications depending upon the funding that's available for anybody who applies after April 27th. Chris, back to you.
Thanks very much, Gary. We're very glad you were able to reengage with us. I will cover this final slide very briefly, as I know folks are likely eager to transition to the Q and A, just as we are. The bottom line is, as many of you may be tracking, the status of what we are calling the Phase Three and a Half Relief Bill, which is the additional $251 billion for PPP that we have already discussed during this presentation, is, of course, also driving uncertainty with respect to the status of a fourth, more comprehensive COVID-19 stimulus package. As of today, what we do know is that Congress will not return to Washington any earlier than May 4. Of course, given all of the uncertainty surrounding existing stay-at-home orders and surrounding the continued spread of coronavirus, that date, of course, is subject to change. But as of now, at least on the Senate side, the Majority Leader, Mr. McConnell, has indicated that he does intend to reconvene his chamber on May 4. That is currently the date on which the House intends to return to Washington as well. What we do not know is precisely what will be included in any Phase Four package. That, of course, will in some part be predicated on what, if any, additional provisions are included in a Phase Three and a Half Relief Bill beyond the $251 billion additional for the PPP. Now, there are some priorities that have been discussed. We can't say here today that there is bipartisan consensus with respect to inclusion of all of those we have listed, and there are, of course, many others that we have not listed that we felt were not necessarily as relevant to this discussion today. But there, of course, as many of you are likely reading and hearing, there's, of course, a laundry list of additional provisions that have been discussed for inclusion in any Phase Four stimulus package. Principal among them, though, are CARES Act implementation fixes and amendments. That is something that we are actively discussing with the HAI team and may very well be pursuing during the Phase Four negotiation and legislative process. Defense industrial base support and other aid to the U.S. manufacturing sector, which could, of course, have implications for some on this call, the latter in particular. Transportation and infrastructure sector funding. There continues to be support on both sides of the aisle for inclusion of at least some transportation and infrastructure funding priorities with prior templates being introduced in the form of infrastructure packages that, no doubt, some of you on this call have monitored very closely since their introduction. Additional relief for individuals and small businesses, including PPP expansion, potential modifications to the unemployment insurance program are also on the table for negotiation and discussion. And finally, as Gary alluded to, increased funding for state and local governments to bolster their response to the pandemic, which includes, of course, both a provision of more PPE to our frontline workers in hospitals, first responders, and we may have some first responders on this call today. So that is absolutely, that last bullet represents money that will absolutely be included in any Phase Four bill. I'm willing to go on the record in stating that. With that, we will turn it over to the Q and A and look forward to what we hope will be an interactive dialogue for the next 20 minutes or so.
Okay. Thank you, Chris, Randy, Gary, Kelly, and Michael. That was a pretty comprehensive overview of, obviously, a very new program, and so we certainly appreciate your time for that. For those of you in the audience who do have questions, I direct your attention to the control panel on the side of your screen. There is a question block. I do ask that if you do submit a question, that you put down the company you're with or who you represent, just to general practice. We will try to get to as many questions that come in as possible. We did have a few questions that came in prior to the event. I think Gary answered a fair number of them, and I'm actually going to go ahead and run through them real quick, just to make certain that everybody got the answer. First one was from Casey Reimer of Jack Harder Helicopters in Hawaii. Did I hear correctly that the amount of money distributed for air carrier payroll assistance will be 100% grant for companies requesting under $100 million, and the 70%, 30% split of the grant to loan will be for air carriers requesting more than $100 million in payroll assistance?
This is Gary Goldberg. That's correct.
Okay. Actually, the first several questions all came from Casey with Jack Harder Helicopters. Regarding PPP, do I need to maintain last year's payroll average up to 75% during this eight-week period to have loan forgiveness? Our employee salaries are generally 50% base salary and 50% commission. Our employees are earning too little, little to no commission right now. Do I simply make the difference up so that I can maintain last year's payroll levels?
You have to, you have to compare your payroll cost. If you've made a salary reduction of 25% in the period compared to the full quarter before the reduction, so is the way the statute sets it forth, so that would be Q1, basically, of 2020, I assume, if, say, you've reduced payroll or salary in April. But Gary, I don't know about how, I know that commissions are considered part of payroll, but I don't know how the commission would be counted, I suppose, as part of the reduction. If you reduce commissions, I suppose that would apply, and the 25% or more reduction penalty would probably apply.
I believe that's the case, Randy, that it would apply. And of course, you have, remember, with respect to loan forgiveness, the 75%, the 25% non-payroll cost restriction is simply what's required in order to get 100% loan forgiveness. It's not an all or nothing proposition. You still would be entitled to some loan forgiveness, just get less.
So there's two aspects of it. One, you would have, if you've reduced commissions in the eight weeks period after you received the PPP loan, then that would obviously reduce the amount of loan forgiveness you might qualify for, generally, because you'd have less payroll costs to tabulate, add up toward what is forgivable portion of the loan. And then if you also had reduced someone's salary more than 25%, and if commissions are counted as a part of that, then anything above 25% would also be a penalty against the loan forgiveness. But as Gary says, that wouldn't eliminate your loan forgiveness, it might just reduce the amount of, the percentage amount of the loan forgiveness.
Let's see, I think this one was answered. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Chris. If I may, just, I want to emphasize that although we're very well informed and try to replicate machines as best as we can, we are human, after all. And so if any of these questions did not, and not to say that the answers that Gary and Randy didn't just provide were not very comprehensive, but if we don't sufficiently answer any of these questions today, Kate and his team know where to find us, and please do feel free to follow up with him or directly with us if you'd like a more comprehensive response to any questions that are asked today. So I just wanted to put that out there before we move on. Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, absolutely, Chris. And I will say one more thing about loan forgiveness. In the frequently asked questions and in the, and specifically, which they are, by the way, continuing to add questions and answers to the FAQs on the website of the Treasury Department and SBA, as new questions are presented to the government that they feel like they need to expand their answers, they're adding to the FAQs. And in the interim final rule specifically on the PPP program, there was a reference that we should anticipate that additional guidance will be coming out specifically on loan forgiveness as we get closer to the period where people would be getting their loans, which is now and the eight weeks after, but specific, you know, as we get closer to June 30th, when loan forgiveness will start being calculated, there's undoubtedly going to be some additional guidance coming out from the government. So while there's more specificity or we're more confident about all of the details about the application of the loan and the calculation of how much your loan eligibility is, there is undoubtedly going to be some more clarifications coming out as we get closer to the forgiveness calculations down the road a few weeks.
Every day, the SBA and Treasury provide additional guidance. Just yesterday, they came out with a whole new interim final rule with respect to the self-employed in connection with the PPP program. So Randy's absolutely correct. You'll see a lot more guidance as we get closer to the time for calculating loan forgiveness.
Okay. Ready for the next question?
Yep.
This is from Jared Vandercooy, Reader Flying Service, Twin Falls, Idaho. With the Treasury waiving the requirement for financial instruments, will that include waiving the restrictions on the executive compensations?
I don't believe it will. I believe that the compensation restriction still will apply, but the warrant requirement won't apply. The reason being that, given the nature of the financial instruments that a lot of the smaller companies have with their banks, it was believed that it would be very difficult and cumbersome, along with very time-consuming, to try to figure out how to even do warrants. So they decided to limit the warrants to the larger airlines, but I don't believe it's going to affect the compensation restrictions.
Okay.
And on the PPP program, and I know Gary was talking about the carrier provisions, but the PPP program, as a reminder, has $100,000 cap on how much can be added into your loan calculation.
Okay. Jay Mulhall of CPI Aero in Edgewood, New York asks, I understand we can use loan proceeds of the PPP program for interest on business debt established prior to February 15th, 2020. Will this use of funds also be part of the forgivable amount over the eight weeks following the loans or when the loans are funded?
Yes, as long as that debt and that interest on debt and other interest on mortgage, if you had one, plus utilities and rent, does not exceed 25% of the use of the proceeds. The other 75% of the use of the proceeds has to go toward payroll. Or if you use more than 25% for for things other than payroll costs, then you lose that anything and beyond 25%. You lose the forgivability of it, but you you still have the loan proceeds, but you just wouldn't get that portion above 25% forgiven.
That's one of the issues that divides the Democrats and the Republicans currently. The Democrats want to see, want to boost the allowable loans to 300% of payroll, which would have the effect of allowing companies to meet more of their non-payroll expenses, even if you still had the 25% limitation.
And that 25% limitation on how you how much could be attributable to rent, utilities, and interest on indebtedness was not in the statutory language, but was added in the guidance and the interim final rules when they came out just on on the second of April, the night of second of April, just the day before the loan program opened.
Strictly an invention of Treasury and SBA to extend the reach of the program. I I don't know if this was mentioned in the earlier discussion when I was off, but I should make it clear that $40 billion was was approved yesterday in the PPP program. And the most current estimate as of this morning is that only about $60 billion remains in the program. So while there's some dispute as to when exactly the money will run out, whether it'll be this week or early next week, it's not going to be very long, and that's going to be the incentive for both parties to try to reach a deal sometime today or sometime tomorrow in the Senate, because neither party wants to be blamed for allowing the money to run out for the PPP program.
Okay, Rick Throck Morton from Aspen Helicopters in California. I may have missed it, but will the PPP be forgiven if included as revenue for year end tax purposes?
You are not, Kelly can chime in here, but you are not the forgiveness is not taxable income to you.
Correct.
Okay, this one's a quick one, easy one for me. Is the webinar being recorded? I missed the beginning. Would like to watch it again. That's from Charlie Seal. Yes, for everybody, you will receive a recording link this afternoon, about an hour after we conclude this presentation, so you will be able to watch it. You should be able to share it if any of your coworkers would like to see it as well. This question is from Candace, too. We have pilots that voluntarily left at the end of February to go to other jobs. Their payroll would show up in last year's payroll. Wouldn't we provide historical payroll for the PPP program? But they would not have received payroll in the eight weeks in any case. Since this will reduce my overall payroll, how would this change in anticipated payroll, which would happen before the PPP program period, affect loan forgiveness?
Trying to digest the question again, so read it to us again.
Okay. They have pilots who voluntarily left at the end of February to go to other jobs. Their payroll would apparently show up in last year's payroll, which they have to provide for historic purposes for the PPP program. They would not have received any payroll during the next eight weeks in any case. Since this will reduce my overall payroll, how would this change in anticipated payroll affect loan forgiveness?
The calculation, the 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 division that you set up to calculate your your average monthly full-time equivalent employees says that you take the average FTEs during the eight week period after you receive the loan as the numerator. Then it says you have a choice for the denominator. You can either use February 15th until June 30th, 2019, as your denominator, or you can use January 1 to February 29, 2020, as your denominator. So that that's how you determine, you set up the equation, and then you come out with a quotient that would determine your whether you had a reduction in your FTE, average monthly FTE count. Now, if you had FTEs that were reduced in the period February 15th to April 26th, and you restore those by the end of June, then you're not penalized for the reduction, but you're so I I'm not sure how that calculation would work out for you. But that's the way it's set up currently in the guidance and in the interim rule in the statute for calculating whether you've had a reduction in FTEs.
Candace, if that didn't quite answer your question, maybe I can suggest that you send your question to me and I can forward it on to.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can try to work it through with you. It's a little difficult to work the work the math here, listening in or on the on the specificity of some of these questions. So we're happy to follow up and try to answer the question.
Okay, we have a question from Andrew Hayden of Asma Aviation in Stratford, Connecticut. Our business is brand new as of January 2020. We have significant expenses such as rent, insurance, et cetera. Is EIDL the best option to apply for assistance due to limited business and no payroll history?
EIDL may well be a better option for you, but that's assuming that the funds are available to fund the program. Given the the current situation for the lack of funding in SBA, while in normal circumstances, if you had the program fully funded, EIDL might be a better option for you. You have to recognize that there's very limited funding available at the moment, and therefore, depending upon what your needs are, they may, it may not be met unless the program is plus up with with additional money.
You can, Gary, let's, I'm thinking out loud with you. You can, if you're a new startup business, the statute does say that it acknowledges that you would not have payroll costs in 2019. So you go back to January of 2020, and you calculate your payroll costs on an average monthly basis for the period that you do have. And calculate your average payroll, monthly payroll cost. So you would still be able to then look forward in eight weeks and assuming you have a monthly average payroll cost based just solely on 2020, then you ought to be able to pay, continue to pay payroll for that eight week period.
Correct. My only thought about it, Randy, was that the depending upon how much of the startup costs for the business are non-payroll costs, that it might be more attractive to go the idle route, assuming that the funds to fund the program are available.
Right. And of course, of course, even if, I I guess the other thought about that is that even if all of the loan is not forgivable, only a portion of it is forgivable because you only, say, you only spent a smaller amount on payroll. The remaining amount of the loan is still available money to you at a very low interest rate with a complete deferral on on pay, any repayment until January of next year. And you you can prepay it without penalty. And and then it would just start on a a schedule of repayment starting January 2021, based on the amount of loan that still remains next year. So it's it's relatively inexpensive money.
Yeah, 1%.
Yeah, it's very inexpensive money to to help provide you some additional liquidity. And I will say that I will say one other thing, which Kelly brought up today, which is new information, just as she said, as of last Friday, which is you can take the the payroll tax deferral on your payroll and and not having to send monies to the federal government for the employer's share of of Social Security taxes, basically. You can defer that until such time as you calculate the loan forgiveness, which helps a little bit with a little bit additional cash flow.
Okay. Question, this one's unidentified. 2019 was a bad year, but we anticipate 2020 will be back on track. Can our 2018 payroll be used for estimated payroll?
No.
No. Please don't kill the message.
If if you, if your first three months of 2020 was better than 2019, there are two options for calculating your monthly payroll cost on the outset. It's either 2019 payroll cost for the complete year of 2019, or it's a one-year look back from basically the the time you're applying for the triple P program. So today's April 15th. If you did a one-year look back from April 15th, 2020 to April 15th, 2019, if that would help boost your average monthly payroll cost, then I would use that that calculation rather than all the payroll costs for 2019.
Definitely.
Okay, well, that appears to be all the questions we have for today. I will ask that if anybody has questions that were not answered, please do email me. The my email address should be in the follow-up email that should show up in about an hour. In the meantime, before we conclude, I would like to draw your attention to what I hope is the slide on the screen. If your business has been affected by the pandemic, we invite you to share your details with us so that we have the information that we need to continue to advocate on your behalf. That address is a web link in the middle of the page. It'll take you to a form on our rotor.org website where you can answer a few questions and give us the insight, give us the input. We always invite you, as always, to share your thoughts and concerns about HAI and our industry directly with our President, James Viola. His email is on the screen, too, president@roter.org. He's always willing to answer your questions and address your concerns. Finally, now, I'll invite you to join us next Thursday at 4:00 PM Eastern for our next edition of HAI at Work. Until then, please join me in thanking Chris, Randy, Gary, Kelly, and Michael from Denton's for their presentation. We've appreciated having you with us today. Thank you so much.